To call to. I would like to call to order the regular meeting notice for today. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
May we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Here.
Councilmember Udi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolts? One moment while we unmute.
I am here.
Thank you. Mayor Jacobowski?
Here, thank you. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations. City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear, we ask that people speak clearly. Please note that all comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask city clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. First, we will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on an item. There's a countdown timer to the left of the public microphone to help speakers keep track of the remaining time to speak. Next, we will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants, and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else you may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you'd like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Finally, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day of a city council meeting for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there's sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM the day of a city council meeting will be included in the public comment record, but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there is nobody present who would be speaking live. Do we have anyone electronically?
Let me give just a moment to see if any Zoom participants raise their hand. Yes, Mr. John Destin?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobowski, Vice Mayor Tolts, and council members. Apologize, I timed these comments for two minutes and fifty seconds, so I'm gonna probably be over. I believe that the recent ordinance revisions accommodating the development of ADUs needs to be revisited. The San Marino City Code has a paragraph that is particularly problematic. In part, it reads, "An ADU shall be similar in the building materials, color, style, et cetera, of the primary residence." The language "shall be similar," I believe, is insufficiently restrictive. It allows city staff the discretion to determine what similar means. And I'll give you a couple of examples of why this is a problem. A new house and garage were completed at 2915 Canterbury. Within a year, an application was submitted to demolish the new garage and rebuild a garage combined with an ADU. The new structure was built using different roofing materials than on the main house. It doesn't look good. One portion of the roof has solar panels, and it makes sense for that portion, but not for the remainder of the roof. The city's Design Review Committee and Planning Commission have traditionally been very reticent to approve secondary structures with roofing materials different than what is found on the primary structure. A second example, an ADU is under construction at 2395 Roanoke. The windows on the main structure are double-hung wood-framed windows with true divided lights. The windows on the ADU are horizontal sliding windows. The windows on the ADU have simulated divider grids that are encapsulated between the two sheets of glass, and they appear to be either vinyl clad or stamped aluminum. The residential design guidelines strongly discourage all of these features, and to my knowledge, they have never been approved for projects that go through the design review process. I find it very difficult to reconcile how the windows on this ADU can be considered similar to those on the main structure. I think that ADU ordinance language needs to be strengthened to read that construction materials and architectural details shall be the same as on the primary structure. And in no case should staff have the discretion to approve windows or roofing materials not on the pre-approved lists. I have other thoughts to share, but this isn't the appropriate forum. I just would like to note that it has been two years and six days since the last joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission, and I suggest that is long overdue. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for your care, Mr. Destin. Anyone else?
Okay, let me see if anybody else has a raised hand. Mr. Johnson, I think previously, did you want to have a comment? Yeah, okay. You need to unmute, sir?
I just have a comment on item number one. Did you want me to wait till then?
Yes, please. Item one, on the proclamation for Parks and Recreation, or?
Oh, I thought it was the.
Tax.
Vacant property, vacant tax.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, sir. Okay, I do not see any other requests for comment.
Okay. And the comments we have received?
Yes, thank you. We also received four public comments that I was able to previously distribute to both the council and to the public, so I will summarize. Received three public comments regarding the same topic, so I'm gonna put those together. We received an email from Ms. Elizabeth Pfeffer, one from Ms. Bridget Garrity, and one from Ms. Amy Garrity. And essentially, they all do not want to see any police officers fired and would like officers to be granted an exemption from the vaccine mandate. And then we also received a letter from Ms. Valerie Munoz, who is the representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, representing cities with non-pumping rights, San Marino being one of those. And she invites the council and staff to join her for a tour and briefing on the groundwater cleanup activities in the San Gabriel Basin. She included a brief overview and an invitation to all council and city staff to participate in a tour to discuss the current cleanup efforts here in the basin. And she provided several attachments, and all of those are also published on the city's website if anybody would like to view those.
Thank you very much. And that's complete?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, do we have a city manager's report?
Of course you do, Mayor. Thank you so much. Can I get that presentation up? Awesome, thank you so much. All right, well, first off, the Fourth of July was a huge success. I know that goes without saying, but we put it on the slide anyway. It was yet another fabulous event, came back bigger and better than ever after last year. We got fantastic feedback on the band. I saw many of you rocking out at that event up there. The band was fantastic, the fireworks were great. It was a lovely, lovely event, not as hot as it could have been, so I will take that. We think that we probably had somewhere in the neighborhood of nine thousand attendees. So it was wonderful, as you all know far better than even I do. This is our flagship event every year, and it was so wonderful to see so many community members come out and enjoy it as we do all of the time. I want to extend a gigantic thank you to all of the staff that made this possible. Of course, staff in the Community Services Department, staff in the Parks Division of Public Works Department. Actually, all divisions of the Public Works Department came out and made it work. Our police, our fire, and everybody, and of course, our council, who was well represented in our executive team. So always a good day and a real feel-good, I would say, moment, but it was several hours and a lot of fun. All right, I would also like to do some awesome staff kudos. It seems in the last several months, we've heard quite a lot, and rightfully so, about all of the delays that are happening in the Community Development Department, as I'm sure you and the community are tired of hearing. We have had some exceptional staffing challenges. We're not the only city experiencing those kinds of challenges, but of course, it is impacting our residents, and many things have been delayed, and I think this speaks to Mr. Destin's comments earlier. So we appreciate the community's patience and appreciate their frustration as they go through this. However, in the midst of all of that, we were delighted to receive a call from Marilyn Pinkerton about her and her husband's experience with community development regarding a permit. She said the whole permitting process was wonderful, and that she and her husband were in and out in thirty minutes. She says her husband gets permits throughout the state and that he was awestruck at how smoothly the process went here in San Marino. She specifically called out Peter Flores, who's our building inspector, you can see him over on the left up there. And then in the picture, also Camilia Martinez, who is our associate planner, and Heather Fisk, who's one of our permit technicians for all of their work. She said they were incredibly kind, very helpful, and that Peter has been Johnny-on-the-spot with helping them. And you know that that was a direct quote.
Well, thank you, and I'd like to anecdotally add to your comment about Mr. Flores. I saw him in a city car a number of months ago, and I went up to him and went into a nicely complaint about a code violation. He patiently listened, and he said, "I'm inspection." And I said, "Thank you for listening." He said, "But I'll carry it back." And I said, "What would you like to say about your job?" And he said, "I love my job and I love working here." And that has stayed with me, and that's an example of exactly what you're talking about. Thank you.
That is fantastic. I have to say, he probably doesn't remember that exchange at all because he has a newborn and is probably not getting any sleep whatsoever. We are so delighted that he's back from his paternity leave and back to helping the community and back in the office with his good spirits and his good energy. So we're very delighted for all these staff people. And Heather and Camilia, they all come aboard in the last year, but, you know, hitting the ground running, and we are very grateful to have them. So thank you for that extra anecdote as well. August brings National Night Out and some awareness of public safety. So we are going to be focusing in on community safety for the month of August, or at least at the beginning. We invite you to join us on August 2nd, which is National Night Out. For anyone who is not aware, this is a consistent date across the country, hence the word "national." This is an event that happens every year on the first Tuesday of every month, and we are excited to celebrate it. We'll be doing this at City Hall, in the City Hall complex, in the back parking lot, but not just in the back parking lot. We're going to open our doors for the community and hope that everyone will come out. Police will have some activities going on and do some education, and fire will as well. And we're also gonna open City Hall and hope to invite people in to really explore the civic campus and see what's there. We're gonna see if we can get a nice public works vehicle in the back to.
Are we gonna have the dunk in the mirror?
No, we were thinking it would be dunk the incumbents that don't have to run for election again.
I think that was unanimously voted on.
So it should be a fantastic event. We hope that the community will come out. We did scrap the idea of a bounce house that would be in the back parking lot on concrete with many children in it potentially bonking heads. So we thought, maybe community safety, not a good idea for that, so we'll let that one go. But we hope that everybody comes out and joins us. The night before that, we'll be having our regular town hall meeting. Of course, those are the first Mondays of the month, and it will be, of course, public safety to highlight those two departments and talk a little bit about National Night Out. As long as I'm talking about town halls, I will just say we will be dark in September because, of course, the first Monday is Labor Day. So we will be dark for that month, and then we'll be coming back in October for that. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. All right, election information. Last but not least, we are getting closer. Of course, as the community knows, Mayor Jacobowski and Councilmember Udi have elected to not run for council. And as we all found out today on the front page of the Tribune, above the fold, council member, Councilmember Shepard Rami is defending her seat. That does mean that there will be, well, there's three seats up for election, but certainly at least two new council members will be coming. And so we hope that there are members of the community that are excited about serving their community in this way. And papers can be pulled as soon as Monday, Monday, July 18th. So if there are members of the community that are interested in serving the community and running for council, we invite them to make an appointment with our city clerk, Christina Baker, and her contact information is on this slide, and she'll make an appointment for you to come in, walk you through all the paperwork, tell you what it is that you need to do. And the reason that we do the appointment is to be sure that you have time to go through the documents. We would hate for you to come down and have nobody available to talk to you. So please do reach out so that we can make those appointments. And then last but not least, the council typically, of course, goes dark in August, although I think that this might be the very first year since I've been here that we actually managed to go dark in August. I know you all are delighted. And so when we come back in September, pending the outcome of the decision on the San Marino Center, we may be under construction in this building, and we might be returning to the bathroom in September. So we may have a little bit of a change of scenery depending on what happens here. And since I won't have another meeting to give a city manager's report, I just thought I would put that out there in case we have some guests that might come in person. It might be right next door instead of in here. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong, any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Rami, any questions?
Yes, why would we go to the bathroom and not back to council chambers?
That's a great question. We have been doing lots of discussing about what to do in terms of space. As you know, the council chambers is very tight. And given the state of the surge right now as it relates to COVID, the BA5 variant, how transmissible it is, we felt like it probably is not quite time yet to be that close for everybody's safety. I also think that some of our commissions are very antsy to come back live, and we would like to have them live, and that ends up being a lot of public meetings in a very small space. So that was kind of in an abundance of caution to try to preserve everybody's safety in that way.
Right, but the other public meetings are once a week on different days.
Yes, it just means a lot of people who are not currently live being in a small space together.
I would like to see us go back there as soon as we can, and I know that the, as our director of Community Services could say, the library is often in use, particularly the bathroom. So I would hate to inconvenience other community groups when we have the council chambers available. And I think that's where we should go back if it's possible, depending on the situation.
My second.
Okay, Councilmember Udi? I'm sorry, did you have any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
I have none. So let's move forward and say.
May I, Mayor?
Sorry, Councilmember Tolts?
I have no questions, although I agree with Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Rami that we should go back to chambers.
Thank you. Anything further?
Nope.
Thank you for that reminder, Dr. Marlowe. And moving forward, do I have a motion and a second to weigh for the readings?
So.
Oh, second?
Great. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number one. And on behalf of the city council, I'd like to share that July of 2022 is proclaimed as Parks and Recreation Month. Parks and Recreation programming is an integral part of the San Marino community promoting health and wellness for all. Throughout July, residents are invited to participate in a variety of events and activities at Lacy Park and throughout San Marino, designed to keep residents of all ages mindful, active, and connected to the community and nature. The weekly themed calendar can be found at cityofsanmarino.org/july. I would also like to acknowledge and thank Park and Public Works and Community Services staff for the services they provide in support of parks and recreation programming. These programs would not be possible without you. Lastly, I have a proclamation I would like to read and present to Community Services Director Johnson and interim Park and Public Works Director Newman, if I may. Proclamation, the City of San Marino Proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month 2022. Whereas parks and recreation programming are an integral part of communities, including the City of San Marino, whereas parks and recreation programming provide health and wellness by improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks by positively impacting mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, alleviating illness, and encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming with youth sports and environmental education, are critical to childhood development. Whereas parks and recreation programming increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reductions. Whereas parks and recreation programming are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas, San Marino recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation programming. Now therefore, be it resolved that the month of July 2022 is hereby proclaimed Parks and Recreation Month in the City of San Marino. In witness thereof, I hereunto set forth my hand and have caused the seal of the City of San Marino to be affixed this thirteenth day of July in the year of our Lord 2022 and one hundred and ninth year of the City of San Marino, signed by Susan Jacobowski as mayor. May I please ask Director Johnson and interim, I'm losing my place here. An interim Director Newman to please step forward and accept the proclamation.
Sorry, ma'am.
I would like people to say a few words. But before that, I would just like to conclude by saying we have got some phenomenal employees in both departments. You somehow each have grabbed the cream of the crop, and the rest of the cream of the crop is in the other departments, but please feel free to offer a few words.
Well, thank you, Mayor Jacobowski, for the honor and the acknowledgement of this proclamation. Community Services is the department that I represent. We work really hard to develop all the programming that activates our beautiful park space, Lacy, as well as that programming throughout the Stoneman Building and other areas around town. So we just really appreciate the acknowledgement and the ongoing support for the department and its programming as well as all of the wonderful professionals that make the programming happen. So thank you very much.
No, it's a pleasure to work for a council that sets good policy and lets staff implement the plan. So I know the staff works hard, and there's, you know, quite a few vacancies within Parks and Public Works that we're working to fill, and I know they're working hard, so they appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
And I also know that you have some folk who've been here fifteen and twenty years.
Yes, we do.
Which is incredibly impressive. And when I.
Dedicated staff.
Stop and speak to them, they too say that they love their jobs, so thank you. We really appreciate them.
And Mayor, if I might, I just have to tell you that I have got, I got an email actually from Robert just today that said that if he was still with his previous agency, there are several of our employees that he'd be looking to steal.
Oh. Well, thank you for that. Okay, and again, we are extremely appreciative. Moving on to item number two, considering of a vacancy tax ballot measure. May we please have a presentation from City Attorney Montez, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. On March 9th, the council directed my office to draft a vacant property tax with input from the legal legislative liaisons. Oakland has approved a tax similar to this several years ago, or a couple of years ago, and there are several other cities that are considering taxes like this in November or in the near future, such as Santa Cruz, Berkeley, San Francisco, Capitola, Carmel, and Richmond. The purpose of the tax is to generate revenue for specified purposes and address issues created by vacant properties, including but not limited to security, maintenance, limiting housing stock, reductions in school district population. The added for you includes a ballot measure for a special tax for the voters in the city to consider in November. The tax would be levied on vacant residential and commercial properties, defined generally as those occupied for less than one hundred and twenty days per year. The measure also includes various exceptions listed in the staff report and the measure itself. The amount of the tax would be $6,000 per residential parcel or commercial unit, subject to a CPI, that's annually. And the total revenue to be generated is unknown, but a considerable estimate of ten percent. Vacancy would equate to $2,820,000 annually. Because this is a special tax, would require approval by two-thirds of the voters who vote on the measure. Uses would be limited to public safety services, including police, fire protection, and code enforcement, as presently drafted. The ballot measure ordinance provides flexibility in determining vacancy. Initially, this would be staff implemented based upon information gathered from the public and other sources. It's anticipated that several notices and our contacts would be made with a property owner prior to levying the tax. And the ordinance also includes administrative appeal procedures in the event an owner challenges the application of the tax to their property. As drafted, the ordinance would sunset after ten years. And the recommended action would approve two resolutions. The first, calling a special election on this ballot measure ordinance, giving council preference for arguments concerning the measure to be included in the ballot materials, and directing the city attorney to prepare the summary of the measure that has to be included in the ballot materials. The second resolution requests the county consolidate this with the general election occurring on November 8th, so it would appear on everybody's regular November 8th ballot. The liaisons that worked on this matter were Councilwoman Shepard Rami and Vice Mayor Tolts. So I would conclude my report by asking them to add anything else they feel appropriate at this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
Thank you very much, City Attorney. Thank you, Mayor. It was, this is something I think that came up several years ago, and we have struggled to find a path with the, how to implement this or come up with an ordinance that would be fair to residents as well as protecting or dealing with some of the issues. And I think during COVID especially, it's become more apparent, as well as with sort of recent statistics in our city in terms of drop in enrollment and drop in population. That is, those things stem from empty homes. And unfortunately, they have negative impacts that are much greater than just having somebody next to you leave their house vacant because they live elsewhere, or they want to keep it for some later time to sell. And so I think this is, time is upon us. We've tried, and there have. City Attorney and his firm have done extensive research about the ones that are going forward in the state of California. So there is now precedent in our state, which we didn't have before. And so looking to those, even though the $6,000 seems like it might not be much of a deterrent, that has been approved by, I believe, the California Supreme Court. And so to that end, we know we can do this now, and it would be legal in our state. So I think that's an important, that's why it's changed, and I feel that it's time to move forward because, as we know, our code enforcement, and I'm sure Director Figaro can speak to that, are very strapped with the number of properties they visit on a daily and weekly basis. We've even had to add people there. And that is directly related to many vacant homes and checking on those and moving forward with trying to get them cleaned up and safe. Our police and fire, which are also very taxed in terms of staffing, and all the responsibilities that those departments have, also have to send out police officers who do a lot of this and deal with empty homes and other staff as well to follow up on those things. So part of it is to motivate people, but I also think there is a public safety, there is wildlife issues. The house next to us was a wildlife waste station for a while, which was charming at first, but not when we had coyotes and possums and skunks and every type of varman next to us on a regular basis. next to us on a regular basis. And my dogs loved it, but we lived in fear for their safety. As well as a commercial areas, we saw during COVID that then with so many empty commercial spaces that really impacted those around them. And we had a number of break-ins during that time. So for all those reasons, I really think it's pressing upon us to move forward with this as a community. And I appreciate that city attorney has come forward with this. And I think it will be an improvement and a benefit to all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tall.
I, are, am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Oh, thank you. You know, we have an issue in town and that issue's been discussed for years and that's vacancy. That issue has created problems. It's created a lack of students in our schools. Created issues with neighborhoods. It's created the potential for crime, as I recall, that occurred over in the Mission District where someone was living in the house and ended up running a burglary or robbery chain. This is one of the solutions that we're recommending. And in my opinion, it's an opportunity for the, for the community to step forward and see whether or not this is the solution that we achieve. Those problems, by the way, cost us money. And the only appropriate way to achieve that money back is through the measure like this. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything further in your presentation?
No, just that if this moves forward tonight, it just requires one vote and then it will be put on the ballot. If there are any changes that anyone would like to make, they can be made if there are minor changes tonight. And then if anything significant, probably need more time to draft.
Thank you very much. We will move on to questions from council members. Councilmember Huang, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Yudi?
No questions.
And Councilwoman Shepard Rami, is there anything you'd like to ask?
Yes, thank you. Okay. I am most concerned as Vice Mayor Tall tonight brought up, the school district is impacted by this. And I think that's part of also who we're trying to benefit with doing this. Is there a way, and I don't see it here, and obviously the funds that would be raised, I believe in here, go to our public safety. But I would like to know if there's some language and if we could share the revenue after we deduct the cost that the city for the implementation of the program. Is there a way to share the tax income, if you will, with our school district? And can you give us some language that we might add tonight to do so with the school district?
Yes, Mayor members of the council, this is an issue that was raised in the discussions on this preparation of this item and did not make the final cut, but it could be added. We would simply need to add to the use of funds sections, and I think there's four places. Some language, right now it says, right now it says for public safety services, including police, fire protection, and code enforcement. We would simply need to add maintenance of school facilities and school staffing, if that was broad enough to cover the concerns that the council had. And I can call out the places where that would have to be added. In the ordinance on page 31, section 260502, as of the purpose, and it would just, those words, maintenance of school facilities and school staffing would need to be added there. Similarly, on page 38, 260509 sub A is the use of funds. And again, adding the same language, maintenance of school facilities and school staffing. And if that was language that the council wanted, I would also recommend that we change the ballot question on both of the resolutions, as it would appear for the voters to read, shall the measure to levy an annual special parcel tax on specified vacant commercial and residential properties within the city of San Marino to fund public safety services per n, including police, fire protection, and code enforcement, close per n, comma, maintenance of school facilities and school staffing in the flat amount of $6,000 estimated to generate $2,820,000 annually per n, assuming a 10% vacancy rate, close per n, subject to an annual cost of living increase for 10 years, be adopted. And so if, if those changes are acceptable, anybody making a motion can reference that.
Thank you. Any other questions, council member?
I had one other question as to the, one of the exclusions is if a property is actively marketed for lease or sale during the relevant calendar year. And I don't know, I'm just worried what is actively marketed, I guess. Because we do have a lot of vacant properties, I'm thinking particularly in the commercial area, that just stay vacant for a long time, but they are listed with realtors for, for rent. But it's not something that ever happens, I guess, for lack of a better. And so is there some way that we could clarify that so that it, it has a finite period before we start the property would qualify as vacant?
Well, it would either be
Or is it better?
Limit, limiting it by duration or adding some more specifics as to what the council considers to be actively marketing. Obviously, marketing of homes has changed radically over the years. And sometimes just posting something on the internet causes a sale immediately. And sometimes, you know, and somebody who doesn't really want to sell can certainly list their property at a very high price above market. And so I'm not sure exactly how to skin that cat.
I don't think I'm as worried about it being abused in the commercial area because we do have a fairly quick, although I understand what you're saying. But I think it would be presumptuous maybe to question somebody's price for their house. However, I do think that there are a lot of listings in the commercial area that are for rent that technically never get looked at or never. And that's where I'm seeing, and I think recently we experienced some secondary crime in those buildings that had rental spaces that weren't. Then the other people that were next door to them actually were broken into. And it became an issue particularly in the last two years. And so I'm looking to maybe try to figure out what it means to actively market it, not so much in a residential context and the price issue, but particularly for commercial, that it has to be an ongoing. Or, or like you said, limit the duration. I would listen to my other council members if they have, as well as my liaison, Vice Mayor Tall, if he has suggestions in this regard.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That was it. That was one.
Vice Mayor Tall, do you have any questions?
I, I do not have any questions, but I think that the issues that Councilmember Shepard Rami mentioned can be handled once we get experience with this. And then we could amend whatever's, whatever necessary regulations there are to address these issues. I think that there will be issues, but I think like a lot of other things that we do, sometimes we have to experience them before we could fix them.
And just for clarification, excuse my interruption. The, in the, in the event somebody claims that they are exempt because of the active marketing exception, if, if staff does not agree, they would deny that exemption and there would be an administrative appeal. And the result of that administrative appeal, I think over time, those would also help shape what active marketing means.
All right. That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I know this is more for the comment time. But in reference to sharing with the school, I think it would be, if we, if we do at any point decide to include that, to certainly have their formal buy-in, that, that would be acceptable to them. There are some people in the community who I have spoken to who would not be in favor of this tax. And that is certainly, certainly their right. And we just don't know where everybody stands in advance. I had previously mentioned it to some school board members in past years and didn't get too much of a reaction. So it would just be helpful if we decide to go forward with that to, to have their thoughts. But going on to a few questions. Councilwoman Shepard Rami represented that the California Supreme Court had supported the tax and the amount of 6,000 per year. Can you sort of side with city? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not familiar with the California Supreme Court challenge or ruling on that. Oakland's is the first ordinance that sort of went into effect in 2018. That amount was set in the Oakland ordinance. It's also equivalent to other ordinances that are being considered. It seems to be the, if you will, going rate right now. The, the, I know that the ordinance in, there is an ordinance in Canada, in Vancouver, that was challenged in their court system and was denied under their constitutional rights, which are somewhat similar to California's. In terms of litigation challenges to, to vacancy taxes in California, I'm not aware of any appellate level vacancy tax challenges. I, I believe there have been some initial trial court challenges, but they didn't go anywhere.
Okay. And you had mentioned other cities that are in the process of putting this together. Have any of them formalized placing it on a ballot yet?
I am not aware of the current status. I know that a lot were looking at doing it and we're getting close to the deadline. I think Capitola was one that was going to, but I think they've elected instead to move up forward with an initiative measure, let citizens collect signatures because an initiative measure only requires a 50% approval, 50 plus 1% approval, as opposed to the council putting on as a special tax that requires two thirds voter approval. I know San Diego was looking, I know Los Angeles, city of Los Angeles was looking as well. I just don't know if they're making the November 8th date at this time.
Thank you. That education is helpful. I'd like to follow up where Councilmember Shepard Rami had commented about property that is being marketed. Similar types of questions that I may have. So we aren't given a timeframe and military deployment is certainly clear. Owner's death. There's a home down the street from me where the owner died about 20 years ago and it's still vacant. So how would we qualify that in terms of when we would move forward with the assessment?
Yeah, let me just review the owner's death real quickly. Exception.
And that is on page 26 with the exclusion, it's below military deployment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the actual language in the
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance measure itself, because there may be some
My apologies.
Yeah.
It is on page 36. The owner died at some time during the relevant calendar year. So I believe the
It's, yeah, it's only the one year.
It was only in the year of the passing of the person, the owner.
So rather than the calendar year, could we make it within 12 months of the owner's passing? Because if they die in November, that's the calendar year.
If that's council preference, absolutely.
And I'm certainly open to what my colleagues would feel about that. And then again, we have another issue where property is subject to active construction for at least 50 days during the relevant calendar year. We have some properties that are in their third and fourth year of construction. How do we, sorry, how do we address those issues? Is that in the ordinance specifically worded?
It's defined
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, it, it does say that
I find it on page 36. It's almost
Sub D.
Right.
Right.
And so it defines it as an active building permit is being processed, application is being processed by the city, which I think commonly is one year with a one-year extension. And after that, people are supposed to go to Planning Commission or another, you know, to get the director and then the planning commission in order to get additional years. I'm not saying it always works out.
If we could maybe tighten up that language, and I'm not certain how, but we certainly have a significant number of those properties in town. And if it is, then with Planning Commission approval for X amount of continuation, I think we should state it that way. But otherwise, it just feels quite open. But if my colleagues don't feel that's necessary, that's fine. And then owner again is in a long-term care facility. Having lived that, I certainly know that folks can be in a long-term care facility for an extremely long period of time and to
That's a, that's a one-time, three-year exemption. As currently drafted.
That's quite a bit of deterioration on a property if nobody's really checking it out during those three years. But I guess we can discuss that further later. I, I feel that that's a long period of time unless we have some kind of coverage with the maintenance with it. That's the end of my questions. So anyone else had anything they wanted to add? Okay. I'd like to now open this up to public comment. I see nobody here wishing to speak on this topic. Do we have anyone online?
Yes. Mr. Michael Johnson, go ahead and mute.
Yes. My name is Michael Johnson. I live on Bellhaven Road, 1300 Bellhaven. And I was concerned too about the long range vacation or abandonment of property effectively. Have a house across the street, it's been empty for, oh, I don't know, 10, 15 years and largely uncared for. So I'm wondering that $6,000 a year may look as small potatoes right now because house prices are increasing fabulously. So, but I'm wondering, could, could it be, if, if the house is vacant for one year, 6,000, then the next year goes up 20% or 30%? Another third year goes up some more and so forth. So a serial increase if the house is going to continue to remain vacant. That was my suggestion. I think I give more incentive to get people to maintain the house. Second item, I think would be, I think it's possibly already covered. And that is another neighbor here. The lady's main home is in China and she, she lived here mostly because her son was going to school here. But she's gone back to China and I think cannot get back because of the COVID rules. So, or at least it's very difficult to do so. So she has been, it's, the house is well-kept, no problems. It seems to be doing very well. Mail is taken care of and all that. So I would not like to see her get in trouble. Just, but the unkempt house, the house that has really looked bad. I would, I would like to see some incentive to make sure that we can get that taken care of. It'd be nice to have a family in there. That's, as you, as you well know, and that's what you advocate.
Thank you very much, Johnson, for your comments. We really appreciate you taking the time to join us.
Thank you.
Do we have any others?
There are no other requests for comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring this back to council for discussion. And may I start with Councilmember Huang?
Um, well, I think it's long overdue and I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Councilmember Udi?
Yeah, I think this would be very hard to enforce and it won't solve the problem. But since it would be going to the public, you know, I would not oppose it here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
I had a question and then a comment. Or I guess to your question, Susan, I would agree that the owner's passing and the, as well as those under construction, would be nice to give those a two or three-year maximum period. I think that might also reflect some of what community members such as the gentleman who just spoke, you know, the the long term and, and and help the enforcement of this. So in some of those, I, I think we could make them similar to how we have, for example, the one-time, three-year on page 37 and place that same language in some of those others would make sense, at least. And for me to give some finite ends to some of those would make it stronger. And I'm, I think we could do that as well. I wanted to ask about the amount itself because I also had a similar concern as expressed just now during public comment that 6,000 is not much. And I remember we discussed, and so perhaps city attorney could remind me. Other jurisdictions who are considering this, and I'm not sure who's moving forward with it for this election or how, have also done 1% of the property value, which in our community would be larger than the 6,000 presumably in most instances. So I don't know, is that actively being used in California or can you speak to that?
Yes. The 1% is in Vancouver. In California, that would be unconstitutional because we have an ad valorem property tax that's already established in the constitution. And you cannot exceed the amount that is already established in the constitution, which is why this needs to be a special parcel tax based on a dollar figure rather than based on the value of the property. Because that will run afoul of that constitutional provision.
All right, that helps. So, so the only way to raise it is to just, if there was other council members and we had an amount that we thought might be acceptable, like $10,000 at this time.
Correct. Or if you wanted to go with the escalating method that was described by the member of the public, that would create more administrative issues because a property might not show up on the levy until the second or third year of implementation of the ordinance. So that property is going to be at $6,000 and then the property that's been on since the beginning will now be at 6,000 plus 10 plus 10. And so it might be difficult to account for all of that or keep up with all of that. The 6,000 is subject to a CPI right now, so it's pretty easy to administer uniformly year to year. So I would suggest that although there is logical merit to what the speaker was proposing from an administrative and implementation standpoint, it might be better just to start with a higher base number.
Right, right. And that was my thought too, because I know that this will be, if we have an active, it's a lot of work by staff and we are going to have to figure out who does that and on what, you know, basis will those, will they be managed in the future? Because we'll be an ongoing responsibility of the city.
Yes.
So is it possible to change it to 10? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't see any legal impediment to that.
Okay. So then I would just ask my fellow council members if they would consider raising it to a larger number at this time and then with an understanding that that would be for 10 years. But, you know, we would be at that same fixed rate unless something happens to me. And that would only be cost of living adjustments from, from now.
Would it be acceptable if we hear from Vice Mayor Tal? Then we query each council member to see what amount.
Throwing that out as something.
We will certainly come back to it, absolutely. Vice Mayor Tal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of raising it to $10,000 in response to the mayor's suggestion that maybe members in the school board are not in favor of this and we should run it by them. If that school district is not in favor of us trying to give them money, then I, I think that we should take a second look at a lot of other monies we give them. We should give them the option. If they want to decline it, they could go ahead and decline it, but then they'll find themselves out of position. But I think we should go ahead and let the public decide based upon a higher rate of $10,000 than any other recommended suggestions. But we can't worry about what that school district might, might decide at this point because we all hear they're hurting. I hear it all the time. They're always coming after us for money. And if they want to somehow decline this based upon some personal objection to it, that's up to them at the voting box. But if they want to do that openly in a school board meeting, when we're there to issue them a check, I'd be surprised.
Anything further, Vice Mayor?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. And to clarify, my, my reason for the school district being informed is just a courtesy also to let them know that we are including them and to not find out after the fact.
Well, there's, there's a lot of things they find out after the fact.
Can I finish my comments, please?
Oh, I, I thought I heard a downward inclination. I apologize.
Okay. So along with, you know, that school issue, I just think that we need to do this as clear to the public as we possibly can. I have heard from a number of people in the community prior to this discussion that they would be totally opposed to it and would take a front to it. So I really want to make sure that this is all just very clearly stated and that, that's my only concern at this point. Let's go back and poll on the dollar amount. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney suggested 10,000. I believe I heard Vice Mayor in concurrence. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Juan?
Yes, I can support that.
Councilmember Udi?
I'm indifferent.
And I feel I would be more comfortable with a max of eight subject to future amendment. But it appears at this point that there are three of you who are in favor of an initial amount of 10,000. So would someone like to go forward and make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to, sorry, turn to the page. I move to adopt resolution number R-22-31, calling and giving notice of the holding of a special. Well, this is the other part. Special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, comma, November 8th, comma, 2022, semicolon, and a resolution R-22-32, comma, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles consolidate the special municipal election with statewide general election.
Second. I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at, what do I say about the, I'm not seeing it here in the packet. So am I missing?
Yeah, so adopting, adopting the first resolution, R-22-31, calls the special election with the measure to be submitted to the voters and R-22-32 asks the county to consolidate that.
Okay, and I need to include the amendment.
With regard to the amount?
To the amount of the initial tax to be raised to the flat rate of $10,000 annually for all categories of taxable property. And also to include in the purposes and in the question as well as the other two places that were described by our city attorney, maintenance of school facilities and school staffing.
Yes.
And then the last would be in sections C, I'm sorry, I'm on page 36. So I have 26.05.06. So this is the exemptions section to put a finite limit of three years on subsection A1, C, D, and H. I guess for the actively marketed, well, no, forget it, just C and D. For the active construction. And, and the under construction being processed. Right, so that's.
So C, D, and E?
Yes.
Okay, so with construction to put a three-year limit?
Yes.
And?
And there, there was the, also the issue that Mayor Jacobowski brought up and that I believe is under B.
B3.
B3 and do that.
Prior 12 months.
Right.
Got that? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tal?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
I'm sorry, I have to be a no. Okay, moving to the next item. Authorization for city manager to execute a letter of agreement for participation in the mobile crisis unit. May we please have a presentation from community engagement manager, Podras?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So tonight you have in front of you a request for authorization for the city manager to execute a letter of agreement to enter into a pilot program with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. And this will, this pilot program will provide response tools to those experiencing mental health crisis with a mobile crisis unit cohort with us in two other cities. In recent years, national and worldwide detention to mental health has led to an interest in expanding the response resources available to people experiencing mental health challenges. And along with that has come a conversation of how to best mobilize those types of resources to not only just address the public safety concerns that often come with the police response to somebody in mental health crisis, but to, you know, give, give them access to the mental health care that they really need. In an effort to address this in our area, the COG is using Measure H funds to establish a mobile crisis unit. They sent out applications in late 2021 for cities interested in possibly participating in a pilot. And Mayor Jacobowski was, is the council delegate to the COG and responded with enthusiasm. So city staff has been embarking on a kind of group meeting along with South Pasadena and the city of Arcadia to explore kind of what this program might entail. So here are just some of the program specifics. At this point, the steering group has selected a vendor and is ready to move on to the pilot phase. There has been a lot of data collection and will continue to have data collection that will kind of shape the type of response and the calls that we will want to be responding to. The vendor that will be providing these services is the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, or LACADA. And they are currently under contract with the San Gabriel COG. This team will operate out of a retrofitted van that will be used to transport and provide space to serve clients. And it will rotate throughout the week to each of the three participating cities and respond out of those cities. The calls will be on a co-response basis to ensure the safety of the subject and, and all of those involved in whatever situation they might be responding to. And as I said, the call data will continue to shape the program's hours and service along with tweaks that, you know, PD will, will probably have to put into place in order to integrate this into our 911 system. The mobile crisis unit is really trying to focus on immediate health crisis assistance and also a connection to a wider web of resources offered through the county and additional partner organizations that offer the types of services that these people will really need access to. I want to thank the COG. We have Sam Peterson here from, from our San Gabriel COG who's been leading our project. He's spent in a lot of work with the group. And also we have our, one of our city partners, Mayor Caciotti from South Pasadena is here with us today. And my cohorts in San Marino Police Department have also been working on, giving input on the, the program itself. But really, before I conclude my staff report and turn this over to questions, I want to highlight the tremendous amount of work and passion that Mayor Jacobowski has put into kind of leading the charge on this program. And I just wanted to ask Mayor if you have anything to add about the program or?
Thank you very much. And I, I would like to acknowledge my four colleagues in the room. Commander Blondi, who really started working on this early on and getting us great data from the city on relevant cases that would be helpful for this program. Mayor Caciotti, who has visited this program in its current existence in Huntington Beach, where it's had great success and where he's got wonderful dreams where we can go forward. Sam, who has just been facilitating the group of us with such precision in moving this forward. And again, my enthusiasm began when I had gone out the most recent time with our police department at night and observed a crisis situation and saw how long it took for our police department to address the young person in crisis. And again, our police cannot, of course, admit somebody to the hospital, but a licensed clinician can. And this is how this program would be operationalized. And the last thing I'd like to add in this Sunday's LA Times was an article about how California has fallen short with mental health rollout, particularly with the diversion funds with Proposition 63. And this is being modeled after a program in Sweden. San Bernardino County has already launched it and Humboldt, Slano, and San Diego have all launched programs. So it is very timely that we move forward with this. So that completes what I would like to say. Any of my colleagues, would you like to say anything further as part of this?
I, I would just like to end with saying that just as a reminder, at this time, there is no cost to join the pilot program. But the reason why this letter is before you is it does represent a significant shift in policy of how we'd be responding to a very specific slate of calls. So that is why we're requesting your input and authorization to move forward with this.
And thank you. And along those lines, the nationwide 988 mental health hotline number was technically supposed to be up and running in July. So we are officially behind on that. And when that occurs, we know nationwide, there's going to be a huge influx of calls that jurisdictions will have to deal with. I will begin with council questions.
Yes, that concludes my report.
Okay, anything further? Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Juan?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
I, my question is only, since there will be a lot of data collected initially to see how this is rolling out, when will we get periodic reports or how will this, what's the final goal of the first, I guess, year? Will there be something published and available? And how long do you? Is there a notion of how long the funding, how many years or, or what the timeframe is that the funding might be able to do this?
So to your first question, I think I'd be more than willing to work with, or Sam, do you want to take the first? Are both questions?
Yeah, well, I can speak to the first question as far as reporting. Our service provider, LACADA, is required to submit monthly reports relevant with city-specific data to the cohort.
Thank you.
And that will be made available to city staff.
Great, thank you so much. And then also about the funding issue, what do you anticipate? I know we have no idea, but with the situation, now that you have a vendor, how long do you think that the funds and the program, at least initially, will be covered by the, I guess, state funding?
Measure H fund, funding.
Yes.
Yeah, great question. So because it is measured funding, this round of funding does expire in June of next year. So we'll have a year of programming under our belt and we are actively trying to secure not only additional funds for expansion, but to continue the program beyond the initial pilot year. This isn't in the staff report intentionally, but I am very excited that Representative Judy Chu and Senator Feinstein are both supporting in their respective appropriations committees congressionally, a $1.5 million request that we put in to continue operating. a $1.5 million request that we put in to continue operations and expand the program.
Wonderful.
Additionally, we're working with our lobbyists in Sacramento to get additional funds as well. So we're, and if a grant comes our way, we'll apply for it. So we're, we're firing on all cylinders as far as keeping the program going and keeping costs minimal.
Thank you very much, that's good to know. And I appreciate also the, the news of the national support that would be significant for the program and for this area to benefit from it, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything further?
That was it, okay.
Vice Mayor Taub, any questions?
Yes, this is a, is this program been experimented with anyplace else in the state of California?
The short answer is yes, but Sam's coming back up to the mic to give detail.
Yeah, there are a number of programs operational throughout California. The one mentioned previously, the closest one to Los Angeles is in Huntington Beach, running with Be Well Orange County. Theirs has been operational almost a year, they started in August of last year, and they are incredibly happy with it. It's expanding to three or four other cities in Orange County. Yeah, to great success. And, and there's been incredible buy-in throughout the community, city staff. They're very happy with the program.
If, if I were to take a look at one of the reports, would it indicate how many calls they made into San Marino versus South Pass versus Arcadia? Where, I mean, San Marino tends, residents tend to be very private, and suddenly this information, because it is a guinea pig program, will probably be studied and, and assessed. And that is my concern, that maybe our public wouldn't want something like this without being shown as successful. So has that occurred in these other jurisdictions where there's information that's put out regarding how many calls they made in specific jurisdictions? You know, how detailed are these reports?
The reports are totally HIPAA compliant, so there's limited to no danger as far as personal information being exposed.
Oh, I would, I would expect not, I'm just talking about San Marino in general.
No, there, there's been no expressed concern as far as number of calls being a concern. If that is a concern for San Marino, we can potentially look at anonymizing.
No, my concern, you know, the program sounds interesting, and I'm sure it works. My concern is whether or not I want to expose San Marino to a program that is still in its guinea, guinea pig stage. Because anything that results in a guinea pig stage requires much more data assessment. And my concern is whether or not we want to, we want to expose our city hall or residents to that type, that type of, of, you know, looking through the looking glass. So if you could give me a better idea as to how much detail these reports have, I will or will not feel more comfortable about voting for something like this.
Yeah, well, and one of the key metrics we're looking at is the types of services that callers are connected to. So if somebody is experiencing a mental health crisis, you know, we'll want to be able to track, repeat users. Again, it's all anonymized and HIPAA compliant, but just track repeat users, understand that they're connected to services and not experiencing repeat mental health crises. So that's one metric that we want to look into. And we're looking at the number of clients that are housed versus unhoused. We're looking at age ranges, making sure there's a, quite an epidemic of youth mental health crisis in California right now, particularly related to COVID pressures and school pressures. There's also a vulnerable elderly population that are at risk of losing their housing status. So there's a number of different metrics that we want to look at when we're examining the program.
How, how many calls, does anybody take a look at how many calls that if we went with this pilot guinea pig program, how many calls in San Marino? And we look back and take a look at, at what the criteria is, look at what we've done in the past, how, how many times the van would come into San Marino and help out?
Yeah, the, the call range varies quite a bit for San Marino. Anywhere from five to 10 calls a week. It is up to the police department's discretion which calls they would want to have the mobile crisis team dispatched to. So, yeah, yeah, it, it's up to the police department's discretion.
And, and I know that Commander Blondi is there. It, it does, do the police have a total buy-in on this right now? As another tool in their toolkit?
Vice Mayor, we're just waiting for police to come to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I guess I could have said yes from over there, but, um, yeah, we're interested in the pilot program and hope that it'll help out the community and the people suffering from crisis. So yes, we're looking forward to it.
How, how many calls do you think, in general, would use this service? Where, where you would use this service?
Well, like Sam pointed out, it kind of, it depends. And that, what it depends on is the calls per week and the type of calls. So it ranges, sometimes we'll have several calls per week or per day for an individual. That might range from five to seven a week or thereabouts. So it really depends on the type of calls in, in the given week. Sometimes there's no calls in a week, and all of a sudden, there's like 10 in a week.
What, what do we do now if there's a call where you have assessed that there might be a mental health issue?
Well, of course, officers will respond out, they're given information through dispatch from the reporting party as to what exactly is going on. We'll make contact with the subject, whether they're in the street sidewalk or wherever they might be, business and so on. Assess their needs if they're not suffering from mental health issues. And they're just out on their own, homeless, so to speak, without a place to go. We have care packages that we've given out on a regular basis to individuals. There's both male and female packages that include different hygiene products and so on. If they need placement, we'll, of course, see what we can do to get them to a shelter, that type of stuff. But there's a variety of different ways to handle it, of course, if.
Well, how about the, the, the non-homeless people? How, how many calls do we think we have for those actual residents in San Marino on a, on a six, in, in a six-month period?
Vice Mayor, are you referring to those that are suffering from mental crisis or?
Yes, because you, you've spoken about the things I know, and that is, you know, we do have people call in about the homeless, and, and you've talked about the aid we've provided them. But what about the bigger concern? And that is when there is a mental health crisis in, in a home where the, the residents don't know what to do. How often are we doing something like that?
I don't, I don't actually have those statistics or that data with me. We, we could, we could figure it out and provide it to council if, if so desire, but the house.
Well, do, do you believe this is more, this would be mo, used mostly for the, the homeless? Or do you think that it'd be beneficial to residents who are having mental issues?
To that, I would say anyone, anyone that's in need of mental, mental health, or is in mental health crisis, whether it's in a home or out on the street, so. Anyone that's in need. But to answer your question, I think that what we come across more often is those persons that are out in the street.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to ask a few questions for confirmation. And I guess, Sam, you might be the appropriate person. Am I correct that the participating cities have mostly just begun collecting that information on the calls, and we really don't have any longer-term information?
Yeah, I processed all the data that I've received. Our, our minimum requirement for participating in the pilot was to collect data throughout the month of June, and any historical data, to the extent that it had been received, was processed. And I know San Marino did provide some examples of 5150s, which are involuntary holds, which were, happened in March, I believe.
Thank you. And then a question for either Commander Blondi or Chief Encontro. We do track, I'm asking for confirmation, calls for domestic violence, child abuse, elder abuse, and suicide, either attempts or successes, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and a number of those could be possible referrals for this type of service?
At this time, no.
Okay.
Those are, with the exception of the suicide, attempt suicide or suicidal idylleties. Domestic abuse, elder abuse, child abuse is a criminal act, and it would require police response. However, there could be co-response in the, which I'm happy
Yes.
with this organization, is there could be co-response because there's going to be counseling needs. Some of our residents are unsure of where to go, what to do. They may be embarrassed, they may have some personal thoughts. And when you have a clinician or you have a peer counselor with the experience that the response team will have, they can do the follow-up. But those other items you, you talked about, those other incidents, it is primary, primarily a police response.
And my apologies, I, I was referencing the secondary part, but I did not state that, so.
Not a problem.
Thank you. And have, have you heard any discussion or information with other police chiefs as we are planning on going online with this nine-eight-eight hotline? And how folks are planning on facing that?
I'm, I'm a little confused by who.
It's a nation.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
Do, do any of the municipalities see more of an impact with calls coming in after that goes up in terms of what might, people might be willing to ask for assistance with?
Well, I'm hoping that we'll have a lot more calls for service. I'm hoping that organizations like Sam's will increase and that the Department of Mental Health will increase their available response teams. It's been found that with law enforcement response, there are times where we will not get anyone willing to take assistance. And that's where peer counseling or a clinician can enhance the ability to provide services to those in need. And so, as I've said from the very beginning, I completely support this within the, the mental health crisis window. And this is a great opportunity for us to offer other services, not only from the police department, but from other social services, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. That ends our questions, and I would like to open this up for public comment at this point. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor Caciotti?
With joy.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members Michael Caciotti, Mayor of the City of South Pasadena, I want to say the City of South Pasadena. Now, Police Department supports this item 110%. This is a three-city cohort, and I'll address maybe later on some of the vice mayor's comments. I've got a monthly dashboard from the City of Huntington Beach, which I visited just a few months ago and did ride-alongs with their staff, spoke to their police department, their staff, and the head of health clinicians that run the program. I just want to really recognize your staff, they're incredible, the police department, especially the mayor. She's just been outstanding, really pushing this program, it was getting delayed. We're having trouble working on, you, you just understand, in this area of mental health, there's just so many vacancies out there. We're working with the union station, and I spoke to the executive officer a few months ago with our chief. She has 300 employees, she's down 50 and can't hire her fast enough. So it's, it took us a little while to get this nonprofit. But this is really one of the, one of the few, really one of the few fully operational programs, a mobile crisis response team in California. Huntington Beach was the first, it's, it'll be operating one year by August 1st. There's a couple others that were mentioned, but this will really be the first San Gabriel Valley, first LA County, and one of the first in the state. What you'll see in some of the concerns raised was Huntington Beach, when I spoke to the police department, the lieutenant who implemented the program, said at the beginning, some council members had concerns, police fire concerns residents, after six months, buy-in by everybody. And the reason was, when you're talking stats, he said, Mayor, how many stats, how many people responded to unhoused versus housed, schools, businesses? So obviously, more for the unhoused, he goes, not even close, he says 52 to 55% were people in schools, homes, and businesses experiencing mental health crises. The, the minority were people on the streets. So during my ride-along, I went with the team, and what they did, it evolved over the year. They started off with one van for maybe 15 hours, 10 hours a day, then it ramped up to 20 hours a day. Now they've got two vans, 23 hours a day, and expanding to neighboring cities nearby. And they've made contacts with every one of the schools, which we intend to do, and the counselors, which we know the schools have their psychologists on staff, but they said they've been getting calls to schools frequently. So it's a great program. And in response to some of the, the mayor may respond to some of the vice mayor's comments or questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And what they've done is, and Sam's done, we're going to collect these stats, they've got for every month. In Huntington Beach, went from 124 to 201 calls the first couple of months. And again, co-response, they started off taking it slow, the police will respond, and they'll call the, the mobile response team in. But after a year, they found out about 40% are co-response. Because the experts, the clinicians, want the police there most of the time. Whereas, she said, a difficult, maybe a child abuse, elder abuse, domestic problem. And then the police, they feel safe, police say, okay, you're good, we take off. What's interesting is, all the demographics, they've got age, and in Huntington Beach, the majority, it was interesting, were aged 55 to 64, were their highest number of responses. And they've got a number of calls to private residents were the highest, public spaces were second highest, businesses next, by telephone, or shelter. So they, they went down, so it's really interesting stats. They've got the gender, they got the reasons they responded, mental health was number one, proactive engagement, where they actually went out to the beach, or went out to a site to work with the homeless, or families in stress, substance abuse was big, a public disturbance, a homeless person on the street. Why this is important is, I, I called, we've been working with Sam on these programs for over a year. So I called Department of Mental Health for the county, said, I want to go on one of your ride-alongs, hear a lot about your mobile crisis response van. Finally, he said, Mike, meet us over in Pasadena. We have a response to a family that's been in distress, Chinese-American family, they haven't come out of their apartment in six months. The neighbors are concerned, the fam. I got there, got to probably nine o'clock with Lieutenant Robledo from our, our team. The psychiatric mobile response, two people, two, right, two clinicians showed up. Later on, Pasadena PD and a psychologist showed up. We were there for almost four hours on one call. The police tonight, before it broken the door down, the family was, husband and wife are living in the bathroom, some psychosis. It took four hours to try to resolve this. And I asked the supervisor, how many teams you have for our San Gabriel Valley? One team, two clinicians. I said, it's Monday, how many calls did you get Friday? We had 13. How many did you respond to? Only four. So if we, if we need them, they're not going to be there for a response. So this is an important program, hope you can consider it, and I'm available for any questions, Mayor.
Thank you so very much, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to take public comment online?
There are no requests for comment online.
Okay. Then I will bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Judy?
I can support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
Yes, I can also support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
I can support this, and I wanted to thank the mayor as well as Commander Blondi. And it was nice to also hear from the South Pasadena mayor, as well as the executive. And I know that it's been very important to our community engagement manager. And I believe many members of the community are supportive. I remember things going out about calling on the nine-eight-eight number to our Congress and representatives. So I think there's a need in the community and a recognition that this will be another service that we could bring here and will assist those in crisis. So I think it's very important that we do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Taub?
Well, I believe in the program as a whole. I don't think that San Marino should be involved in a pilot program, especially based upon, there's a lot of things that we don't know. I'm looking at the, the Regional Homeless Program Letter Agreement that will require the city to provide certain information. There's no discussion as to liability, who's going to assume that? It's just that while I hope this program succeeds, I just don't believe I have sufficient information in, in order to determine that we should move forward with this. I hope they find some cities that, that are willing, and then that, that, that program continues to be offered. But what's going to happen when the funding runs out? But what's going to happen when the funding runs out? There's a lot of questions that means that while the program is, is, uh, good-hearted, I just don't think it's, it's ready for San Marino at this time. So I would be a no.
Thank you. I obviously am in support of this program, and I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the city's participation in the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments' Mobile Crisis Unit Pilot Program and authorize the city manager to execute a letter of agreement on behalf of the city. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt.
No.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Um, item number five. I'm sorry, far. Um, approval of ordinance, um, number O dash two-two dash one three nine six, um, concerning, um, evictions. May we have a presentation, please, from City Attorney Montez?
I think the number was wrong. Oh. Okay. No, I meant O dash twenty-two dash one three nine six, is that what you? Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Miss hearing.
No problem. Okay, um, yes, may we have a presentation, please?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor members of the city council, on April eighth, twenty twenty, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance to create certain eviction protections for tenants experiencing hardships related to COVID. Several cities did this at that time. Uh, in the intervening two years, several other protections have come into place. Uh, California adopted two pieces of legit legislation, the COVID nineteen Tenant Relief Act and the COVID nineteen Rental Housing Recovery Act. Both included eviction protection with partial payments of rent and financial rental assistance. There have also been certain state executive orders postponing, uh, eviction implementation. Los Angeles County has an eviction protection program in place, and there have been additional federal and state assistance grants made available. Um, as a result of these protections, most cities have sunsetted or repealed their ordinances at this point in time. And the ordinance before you would repeal your urgency ordinance. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Okay, uh, starting with Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Huang, questions?
No, no.
Councilmember, uh, Shepherd Rami, any questions?
No, thank you.
And I have been informed that, uh, Vice Mayor Talt has left the meeting. I have no questions. Um, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Do we have any?
There are no requests for comment on the side.
Okay, and, um, let's bring it back then, and, um, any further discussion here? Or would a member like to make a motion?
I move to waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title only. Ordinance number O dash twenty-two dash thirteen ninety-six. An ordinance of the city council for the city of San Marino repealing ordinance number O dash twenty dash thirteen sixty-two U pertaining to evictions.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving to, um, item number five. Um, approval of ordinance number O dash two-two dash one three nine three. The first reading amending the city code to make updates to the film policy. May we please have a presentation again from, uh, Community Engagement Manager Quadris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, hello again. Uh, so this item is a carryforward from my predecessor, and I'm pleased to bring in front of you, uh, the first reading of an ordinance to amend the city code to update the film policy. As I oversee the film permit processing, I'm very excited to have this in front of you. Um, I think it's well established that our current code is a little ambiguous, and it's led some, uh, to some differences in interpretation in the past. Um, and that led city council to appoint last May, uh, two council members. At the time, time Vice Mayor Susan Jacobowski and Director Shepherd Rami, uh, to, uh, explore a revised ordinance. Um, previous staff worked with these council liaisons to bring proposed changes to the film permit policy for discussion, uh, last July. And the majority of those proposed changes are still in the ordinance that are in front of you today. Uh, council direction last July was to move forward with these changes, um, and add in just a few small tweaks here and there, but specifically to focus on the unmanned aircraft systems, um, and as they relate to filming, they wanted that a little bit more flushed out. Um, unfortunately, a staff vacancy in the community engagement manager position, and then a turnover in City Attorney's Office has caused a little bit of a delay in getting this back in front of you. Um, but fresh eyes and new information from the council liaisons have, I think, allowed, uh, just even more additional improvements to this ordinance. Um, the attached ordinance provides clear direction forward on all of the items previously discussed by the council. And it added a few clarification points, uh, as well, from cer- from recent circumstances that have been brought to light within the film process. This includes a comprehensive prohibited activities list, uh, timeline for accepting applications, and additional material to allow for proper review by staff. And, um, I also just want to say that having experienced in my previous agency, some very large, very complicated filming, uh, permits before, I can say that this is, this really provides the best protection possible for our city. I really want to thank Mayor Jacobowski and, uh, Councilmember Shepherd Rami for their guidance on this, and their, all of the research. And I'd ask if they have anything else that they want to add to, um, this presentation.
Thank you, thank you for your work. Councilmember, I know you did, um, some beautiful weed work on this, is there anything further that you'd like to add?
Well, being a weedy person, um, and I don't mean that in an archaic sense. Um, I want to just clarify a couple of things here. That I think were left off, and, and then one move. Which is just moving the definition under level three motion filming definition, um, on page seventy-seven. I think that belongs under still photography. I think it just migrated there perhaps because it talks about photography with no filming as present. Yeah, okay, so that's a typo. Um, there were a couple of things, I think, that we discussed. One. Um, and I'll just go through them is on the bottom of page, or would be on the bottom of page seventy-three, and it's exceptions. And we, um, include schools in there, or, or in our general discussion, and the cat of city council had previously. And I don't see, so maybe, so I thought that we do need a D that says exempts, filming activities conducted for public or private school use only for schools located in the city of San Marino. Or that's my suggested language or something, because they do have, in past, we've had, um, recordings of school programs and that type of thing, that then might be broadcast for parents who couldn't be there. And I know we want to make sure, as well as student-led projects and things, particularly at the high school, they have quite an active program there over the years. So I wanted to make sure that we had language, uh, that allows all of that to happen without going through this entire process. And so I don't know if we can add that at this time.
Yes, I think the language you used was verbatim.
Okay, that's what I.
Correct, yeah, so.
I'm just putting it back in because it might have been there and it fell off, so that was, I thought, I thought it should be there. Um, and then in prohibited activities, I just wanted to make sure under subpart D, that we had vehicle stunts or chase scenes. We talked about that as well, that we don't want, um, speeding in the streets.
I'm sorry, where are you right now?
I'm on page seventy-four, and it's under eleven point oh eight oh five. And it's prohibited activities, subpart D. Um, I just want to make sure that that would be in there, because that's something that we talked about, is, is something that the city definitely does not want. And. Oh, I think I have two other small changes, one is the level one motion filming, we talked about five people, and I think we should have less than five vehicles. We talked about reducing the number of vehicles like we do under, um, you know, like motion, I'm sorry, level two has nineteen people and nine vehicles. So I would just ask to cut it in half, like three. The other, uh, that would, on page seventy-six, we have a, a top, we have no out, um, this is under motion, filming level two, under the definitions or the exclusions. Um, it talks about no outdoor lighting above eight fifty lumens, but I think we discussed this, that it should be capped at four or five hundred, because eight fifty is quite bright, that's like a, you know, sporting football field kind of lights. And I, I think that would be disturbing to neighbors, even, um, uh, in any circumstances, but certainly in our community. And. I think that were the only changes that I recall from our discussions that I thought were left out.
Okay. And, uh, I was satisfied with what we had, and of course, I knew that Councilmember Shepherd Rami would have the details for us. So those are our words to complete your presentation, and thank you. So, um, I'm lost in where we were, where we.
Sorry, I, I just wanted to make sure some of those were sort of two things together, because I think some of them were just correct.
So the staff report is completed, and we are happy to turn it back over to you for questions. Councilmember Wong, questions?
Uh, no, thank you.
Councilmember Udi.
No, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Shepherd Rami, any more questions or comments?
No, but thank you so much, I know Nicole has put in, uh, I'm sorry, uh, I should say, Community Engagement Manager has put in a tremendous amount of work on this, and she brings her prior experience as well that helped us, um, move this along. And, and I think doing a very good job for our community, um, and will certainly help the process at City Hall. And our residents understand in the future, it's very clearly laid out. So thank you, as well as our city attorney for helping us, um, clarify and improve what we had before.
And I think I can simply ditto that, so thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this?
There is no request for comment on this item.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I'd like to bring this back, um, for discussion, uh, Councilmember Juan.
Um, no, um, thank you, which is, I want to thank everybody, uh, for putting the efforts in this.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi.
Yeah, I too want to thank people for ushering this through.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Shepherd Rami, any question or comment?
No, it was a pleasure to work with the mayor and, um, as well as our community engagement manager and, uh, move forward, move this forward.
Thank you, and I feel the same. Uh, do we have a motion?
I move to waive full reading and introduce for first reading own, by title only. Ordinance number O dash twenty-two dash thirteen ninety-three. An ordinance of the city council, the city of San Marino, amending the city code to make edits to the film policy with the edits, uh, or corrections that were spoken here today.
Thank you, and I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item number six. Approval for additional public trees for removal to be included in the spring, twenty-two removal list. May we have a presentation, please, from interim director Newman?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. The item in front of you tonight is item number eight, starts at page eighty-one of your notebook. It's really a continuation of the May eleventh council meeting, in which the council asked for clarification on the location of nine trees. So we, we're bringing that item back, consistent with the street tree ordinance. And, you know, with the, the goal of the, the city trying to protect urban forest and, and public safety. So we have actually ten trees. We identified one tree that we had some concerns about for fire as it related to the July seven, or July fourth fireworks at, uh, Lacy Park. So we added that, and after reviewing it, we thought it wasn't a concern for fire. But since we've done the urban forestry and it's got disease that we're concerned about transmitting to the adjacent trees, we'd like to add that. There are two changes, just minor changes within the, the staff report. Tree number two kind of self-selected itself out and actually fell on its own into the public right-of-way. Sunday night into Monday, and so it's been removed, that tree no longer exists, um, completely on the ground. And then, just on a clarification, I think the street address for item number five, or tree number five, it's listed in the packet at sixteen thirty-five Chelsea, it's better addressed as sixteen twenty, uh, sixteen thirty-five is what it's listed as. Better addressed as sixteen twenty-five, so just one digit off. Um, with that, I'm available for any council, uh, questions. The next step would be, depending on council actions, we would provide notice to the property owners and then remove the trees within ten days, or after ten days of, of that notice, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I'm not sure, but I should ask the liaisons to comment or question first. Um, but I guess we'll start with, um, interim director Newman and see if you have any questions. Councilwoman Shepherd Rami, any questions?
No, I appreciate the address correction on number five, as we discussed prior to the meeting, because that is a long property with several oaks at various stages of growth. And so I, I want to be very careful, it is in front of the sixteen twenty, it's a one building that's like an L. And so it has different numbers on all the doors, if you will, I think it's a series of offices, I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
And so I just want to make sure, because if we say sixteen thirty-five, that's actually around the corner, and they're very healthy oaks on that side. And that was a problem before, um, with sixteen thirty-three even has a healthy oak in front of it. So it's really the doorway that's labeled sixteen twenty-five, and there is actually a number on the street as well. But it's always has a car in front of it, because people work in that area and park on the street. So I appreciate that you came forward with that. I do have a question for you on, on tree number two, because I went by it, and it's sort of hidden, and I believe it's still there. So something else may have, are you talking on the east side of the street?
So it's on the, well, it, it dressed off a Roanoke, but it was on Del Mar, because it's a corner property.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
So it was probably twenty-five feet from the return, it's gone.
Yes, yes.
I got pictures laying on the ground, so I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, the only, well, I don't know if I ask questions now, the only one that I, um, don't agree with is, is number nine. Which is a very healthy tree. I did not see any staining on it, um, and I don't know if anybody confirmed, the report was done a while ago. And that tree is beautiful, actually looks better than many that are on Roanoke that aren't up for, um, removal, uh, because it's not diseased, and it's fully, it's of the same type that we have in other areas of the city. And its canopy is filled with all of it, with bright green, healthy growth. So that's the only one that I still have a problem with, everything else I'm in agreement with, um, with the correction of the address. So that, that's my only recommendation to council, is if we could put number nine on, um, for continuing monitoring. Because I would have gone back there both times and don't see anything, nor do, and I compared it to the picture and the report, and there's no staining on the trunk or any missing, so.
Thank you. Um, liaison, uh, Councilmember Huang, anything that you want to add to the report?
Uh, yes, um, actually, uh, I was there on Sunday on the way home, and then I saw the tree. You know, I got blocked, I had to go around the corner, but, uh, well, you know, actually it was, it looked bigger than the, than what it showed in the picture. Thank God, nothing happened.
Yeah, yeah, fortunate, it was early in the morning, so very little traffic.
Early?
Yeah, ten o'clock at night or something like that, when, by the time we got it.
No, actually, it was, uh, when I got there, it was around nine forty, so.
Yeah, ten.
Thank you. Um, so we will, you both had asked your questions and made your comments, correct? And then Councilmember Udi.
No questions.
And, um, I have no questions. Do we have anyone wishing public comment?
There are no requests for comment on the side.
Um, at this point, I'd like to bring it back to the council for discussion, uh, Councilmember, um, Shepherd Rami.
Uh, my recommendation is to approve the, um, list with the exception of tree number nine. And, um, let's see if that is an issue, I, I think it may have been an anomaly when the report was written by our prior urban forester. And it is a, a nice tree in good shape at present and growing. So I didn't see the things that were there, um, and I just would like us to look at it or have them continue to monitor. It's not, it's also, well, the tree I saw that matches the picture, sort of, it's black and white. But, uh, also didn't have a green dot on it, so perhaps I'm looking at the wrong tree, but it was next to the power lines. I mean, it looked like exactly the same location, so I'm just, that's the one area which I think there's still an issue.
Yeah, we can certainly have nine looked at with the urban forester and try to.
Assess it if there's something.
Do what we can to, yeah, to, to.
If there is an issue.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Councilmember Huang?
I couldn't hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Udi?
Thank you to the experts.
Has any, in offering my final comments, has anyone recently, Director Newman, looked at that tree on Circle Drive or are we relying solely on the?
We're relying on, we went out to spot him, but we did not have the urban forester look at him again. So we'll, we'll certainly have the contract urban forester look at it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the proposed tree removal list and authorize the Director of Parks and Public Works to move forward to properly remove the trees on the list with the exception of the tree number nine.
And the one that has self-removed also is number two, correct? Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Here. Yes.
We know.
Yes. Getting late.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving to item seven. Approval of ordinance number O dash 22 dash 1395, the first reading. Amending chapter 17.02 of the city code regarding restrictions on park restrooms. May we have a presentation from City Attorney Montez, please?
Mayor, members of the council, the city council recently updated park regulations to address certain outdated provisions. Subsequently, the city was contacted concerning a regulation related to restroom usage that was omitted from the prior update. And the regulation provides that no person over the age of five years shall use the restrooms and washrooms designated for the opposite sex unless accompanied by a parent or adult of the designated sex. Staff does not recall ever having to enforce this provision. And further given recent changes in laws concerning restroom usage as well as protections for gender and gender identity, it would be difficult to interpret and enforce this language. And the recommended ordinance would move this language from municipal code. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard Romy, any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Huang?
No question. Thank you.
I have none. Is there any public comment on this?
There's no request for comment on this item.
Any further discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
I move to waive full reading and introduction for first reading by title only ordinance number O dash 22 dash 1395 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Marino, California. Amending chapter 17 oh two of the San Marino Municipal Code, Code pertaining to restrictions on park restrooms.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eight. A receive and file financial report for the third quarter. And maybe we have a presentation from Director Chung who has just handed out some lovely additional info. Can we take a quick break? Sure.
After when this is done?
That's fine. Director Chung, would you mind if we took maybe a five minute break?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
We are back in session and I believe we are preparing for, thank you for waiting, Director Chung. If you would be so kind as to give us your report.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, my report will be the third quarter financial status report. This just covers the period from January 2022 to March 2022. Go to the next slide. So I condensed this report regards to just general fund revenue side. We collected year to date as of March 2020 to $18.3 million. Compare that to a prior year of $17.3 million. That's an increase of $1 million. And, and that's really in line with what we forecasted in the budget. And so nothing to be a red flag there on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we spent $17.7 million versus what we spent last year was 17.1. You're looking at about a point six million dollar increase in expenditures. But we did expect that as, as you remember prior year, we had a lot of closures due to COVID expenditures were lower. This year, of course, less closures. We've seen increase in budget expenditures. But yet, when we compare it to the budget, we've seen less expenditures being that we do see some salary savings in the various departments. With that said, just some highlights for revenues for this quarter. Sales tax is up 43% compared to last year. So we do see an increase in sales tax as we're reaching not the peak of pre-COVID. But yet sales tax, we are seeing that increase and it's good to see that increase. Property transfer tax, that actually never really decreased from COVID, but we see a 35% increase year over year. So that's a good sign in regards to that increase on our property transfer tax. Rec revenues, we see a 263% increase from prior year. And that of course is strictly related to the COVID closures. And then also rec revenues are, or I'm sorry, library revenues 347% compared to last year this time. And of course, that's just really due to the rebound of us coming kind of closer to pre-pandemic levels. On the expenditure side, as I mentioned, we are seeing some departmental savings. But also, as I mentioned, as right, library and recreation has come more to less closures this year due to COVID. We do see more increases in expenditures from personnel and various special events and also programs. But it's really in line with what we forecasted in the budget. So we are on pace to end the year. Pretty much in line with what we forecasted into the budget this year. Moving on to just the yields tonight, unfortunately, our C, the treasurer wasn't able to attend, but she is, I believe, on Zoom. Our current CDs yield is at 0.56%. I know that sounds really low, but we, the city treasurer and I have been meeting in regards to our plan to to see what we can do regards to how to increase this CDs yield. We do have some excess cash and prior about a year and a half, two years, because of COVID, as you've seen the rates here, it's been low, but then you've seen the feds make a lot of moves regards to the interest rates. You've probably heard it in the headlines, financial headlines. And that's really the feds trying to tackle the inflation that we've been seeing. And so what the city treasurer and I have been doing is that we've been more proactive on our investments. We've even seen more CDs, investments that are 3%, even 4% now. And so we've been investing more into these longer, higher year yielding investments. So we've been more proactive there and hopefully we'll see that in the coming year regards to higher return on our investments. Overall, our cash and investments for March of 2022, we end the month at $37.8 million. Versus last year was at $33.8 million, so about $4 million higher than prior. So our overall cash and investments still looking strong. And we expect that to continue to end the year. Close to about $5 million. With that said, I am available for any questions from the council. And that ends my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the work that has been put into this. Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No, no, no questions. Just want to all thank you and Mark for the continued great work and all, all of the footnotes are really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepard Romy, any comments, questions?
Yes, I also wanted to thank you and appreciate getting the footnotes. So it saves us asking as many questions here. And also if residents are interested, then they can also follow along and understand why some of the percentages appear the way they do. So that's a wonderful addition, I guess, for understanding. And also I wanted to thank you for being proactive about getting us into some of those as well as Treasurer Han to get us into some of those longer term situations where perhaps we'll see a lift in some of our realized, I don't know, gains in that regard for, on our investments. Because I, I know that we always will have some cash that way and it's better to put it to work for us even in this awful return market where I think you are searching. So I appreciate that effort.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, why is the, the, is the increase in the revenue due to increase of property tax?
Property tax overall has been 5.1% higher than last year. But it's accumulation of just various revenues such as direct revenues and library revenues coming in higher than last year.
Okay, thank you. I also want to thank Treasurer Han and Mark.
Thank you.
And thank you to your team. As always, the footnotes, as, as I mentioned, eliminate so many questions. With our interest rates rising, I am totally confident you and Treasurer Han will be burning the night oil to see what we can do to get our money back up there with some longer term tools. So thank you. And being a receive and file there, let's see, do we have any public comments?
There is no request for comment on this item, ma'am.
Okay. And we then don't need a motion, do we, on this since it's receive and file? Okay. At that rate, we thank you very much for your work and for your report. Thank you.
I gotta say, I love page 277 with the $45 million in the bank.
That is probably our highest ever, isn't it?
I would expect.
Okay, so now we move on to the consent calendar. And I would like to ask if any of the council members would like to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? And those are items nine through 24. Councilwoman Shepard Romy, anything you'd like to pull?
I have a question for you. If I, if I want to discuss any of the items, then I need to pull them. Even though if I would vote to approve it.
Sure.
Okay. Then I would want to pull item 15, pull item 17, and pull item 21.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Oh, I'm sorry, and 19.
And 19?
Yep.
Councilmember Udi, anything you'd like to pull?
No.
Councilmember Huang?
No.
So then may I please have a motion and a second to approve nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 18, 20, 22, 23, and 24?
So move.
And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski? Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, adoption of San Gabriel Valley Council of Government's Wildlife Management Framework. Yes, councilmembers, there's something that might be helpful from Community Engagement Manager Cladris for you to get more info on?
It's not, it's not so much an info question as I thought the Wildlife Management Framework was interesting reading. And I wanted to know, particularly because I know that many residents are both concerned with coyotes and P. fowl for various reasons in our city. And I wanted to know, is this something that could be uploaded to our website so that we might be able to direct?
Absolutely.
Residents there, because there's a lot of pertinent information.
Absolutely.
About hazing, and it's just another way that people could be informed of what the current state is and requirements are in a couple of ways, you know, about management and what to respond to.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you. And the other question that I had for council that I wanted to bring up is, and I think that, I guess I should go to a city attorney first, because at the end of this, in on page three seventy-nine in our packet, there's an appendix list of San Gabriel Valley COG member agencies that have adopted either management plans, which I think we're doing by this action, but also down below or elsewhere in the report, there's a mention of the number of cities that have laws prohibiting the feeding of wildlife. And I know that we dealt, I believe that we dealt with that with regard to P. fowl.
We did.
And I don't know, is our ordinance also extends, so this is a question that I have heard that people leave out food, for example, for the cute coyotes in some areas. And so while I appreciate and love all forms of wildlife, I don't know if our current ordinance, I know that we had talked about domestic fowl. I mean, we went, we went deep into the bird life. But do we actually have an ordinance that prohibits the feeding of all the animals that would be covered in our management plan?
I do not know the answer to that question. I would have to research that.
Okay, so that might be something, then I'm just asking if we can look to and qualify that we're following the management plan here. And if it regards to certain species, if we might need to amend that same document. I'm just throwing that out, because I do think there, it does also speak to feral cats, which is an issue in a couple of locations in our city. So I wanted to see where we stand with those things.
Good comments. Do I have a motion to approve that item?
Yes, I move to adopt the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government's Wildlife Management Framework.
Thank you, and I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Mayor, can I cut in just really quickly for public comment? There is no public, either on Zoom or in the room, so.
Thank you.
So there will be no more.
On your toes.
Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, moving on then to item seventeen.
Sorry.
Now we have to.
I know, I'm sorry, we had the, we had the motion.
I'll second.
And a second.
Oh, you made it.
Oh, I made it.
And I seconded. He just didn't get to call our names.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay, item seventeen. Go ahead, councilmember, and your comments or concerns on this one?
This has to do with, the amount is stated, and I guess it's for the Director Newman. I don't know if he's here. Oh, yes, sorry, you're behind. You are here patiently waiting. And so my question is, the barrel price of gas has gone down, as have prices. So are we committing to this amount, or can we rebid a contract? I don't know, and I know this is a certain municipal government contracting is a whole new world to me. But it, I just worry that I don't know when these prices were set, and I think that, so I wanted to understand.
So the vendor we use, SCV fuels, goes out and gets proposals for price, marks it up by five cents per gallon, and then passes that cost to us. The number for the second purchase is an estimate. So it will be based on the current market when we go to buy fuel when we need it.
So it's a day of, if you will.
And then we're working, correct. And then we're working on trying to figure out if we have to bid this separately, or can we piggyback with somebody that's got a fuel purchase contract in place? So we'll have something like that available for the next purchase.
All right. Thank you, then. I appreciate that, and with an understanding that hopefully prices will go down before we do purchase. All right, that was my question. Thank you. So I can support this as a not to exceed, and hopefully we will get a better price if possible.
Okay. Any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
And so, motion, please?
I move to ratify the procurement of unleaded fuel and diesel fuel from Southern County, fuels for the city's fueling station in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and four dollars, and approve the future procurement of unleaded and diesel fuel in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number nineteen, acceptance of thirty thousand dollar donation from the Friends of the Crow Public Library.
Mayor, if you, if I may, I just want to interject before Councilmember Shepherd-Romney shares what she wants to, just as long as you've pulled this item. I have an opportunity to remind you all that COVID has been long and kept us from appropriately recognizing all of the very generous people that we've had over the last two years donate money to us. In addition, our retiring commissioners, our bookmark winners, all of the regular things we would normally do some appreciation for. And so I certainly would not have taken your time for this tonight if this stayed on consent. But as long as Councilmember Shepherd-Romney gives us like opportunity, I do just want to remind you that we will be trying to schedule a special meeting, it's mayor's pleasure. I think we're looking at September now to do a big recognition party meeting where we will invite all of the people that we've missed and have some cake and thank them so much for all of their generosity. I apologize, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, please go ahead. Thanks for letting me sneak in.
And that's lovely, but what kind of cake?
Well, we'll have to see.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilmember.
No, that was, I wanted to thank the library staff, as well as Community Services Director Johnson on the excellent library report, as well as call attention to the work from the friend, for the, from the friends of thirty thousand dollar donation to the Crow Public Library. And that is in part why I wanted to call out, we have to skip to twenty-one and make sure that we draw some attention to the upcoming literary libations event, which will be on October fifteenth. I just think that those are all very important and important for our community, because the library does, if Lacy Park is is the heart, then the library is the soul of our community, or vice versa, maybe. So I wanted to call out those things and the good work done by the many groups that support the library, because it's outstanding. And I think they've continued to do great things, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. So it's more of an acknowledgement and calling out and thanking those groups for their efforts and generosity. And Kathy wants to share what literary libations are going to be, all the more. But hopefully, we'll hear about it at another council meeting when plans have been formed up.
Thank you. Any public comment on number eighteen, nineteen?
There's no public comment.
Okay, and motion, please?
I move to accept a donation of thirty thousand dollars from the Friends of the Crow Public Library.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And since we held twenty-one separately, is there anything further, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, you'd like to say on that?
Nope.
Okay, may we have a motion?
I move to approve the closure.
Public comment?
No public comment on this item.
Okay. Go ahead.
I move to approve the closure of the Crow Public Library on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, for the purpose of holding the literary libations event.
Okay, and a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, do we have any written communication or public writings for distributions? Seeing none. Moving on to public comments, I see nobody here wishing to speak. Is there anyone online wishing to speak?
Nobody.
Is there anyone online?
Yeah, we got some staff.
Okay. Let's see. And is there anything that a council would like to add for a future agenda? Councilmember Huang, anything? No? Councilmember Udi?
No.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, anything future?
Yes, I also wanted to ask our city manager to work with the Planning Commission, the DRC, the Public Safety and the Library Board, and schedule some of those joint meetings that have been held in advance if we can, even if we have to do it in a spread-out way. I think it's important for us to work with our community groups that do so much, not community groups, our commissions and committees on behalf of the council, so much of our work. So to schedule some of those joint meetings for the fall, assuming we'll have a place to hold them. Or if it has to be by Zoom.
And Councilmember Huang, you are going to?
Yes, I just remember what Commissioner or Chair John Dustin mentioned earlier about the ADU, you know, the design, how can we, I will, you know, like to look into that. And so that way, we can have the same window design, not the aluminum.
Okay, so the ADU concerns that were mentioned earlier.
Yes.
Report back. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, and do any council members have any special adjournments this evening? We're thinking, and I, no? Okay, with that, I will close the meeting. Thank you.